I'd like to call to order a special meeting for the mayor and city council, city of Tawny Town, for Thursday, May the 18th, 2017, and ask Councilwoman Judith Fuller to lead us in the process.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see such a nice crowd tonight for such a short notice meeting, and we appreciate you all being here. We don't anticipate we'll spend a whole long time here this evening. We have just one item to discuss, and that's a resolution that will outline how a petition for recall is structured.
It's an ordinance.
Ordinance, I'm sorry. It's that resolution, I apologize. And the whole reason for this, I suppose, was an editorial last week, and the Carroll County Times prompted a number of phone calls into City Hall inquiring about this process, and we really didn't have a process formalized, so this is the formalized process. So I'd first like to ask council if they have any comments, and I'll also ask the audience in a minute, but let me hear council's comments first. Does anyone have any comments on ordinance 08-2017 petitions?
I think the first thing I'd like to say is, this isn't specific to recall, this is petitions in general.
That's right.
And I think that's the main thing we need to -- and we talked, how many months ago, about setting something like this up? I think it was quite a while ago we talked about this.
Right after the petition, the last petition.
That's right, because that was a struggle to get through that process. So it is overdue, for sure. Do we want to get into some specifics here before we go to the public, or?
Oh, yeah, you may come as you like.
Section 625-5, Circulators, An Affidavit of Circulator. It doesn't list, but should there be a requirement that the circulators must also be a registered voter in the city?
If you want to make that a requirement.
Okay, I think that should be a requirement, personally. I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
I could support that.
Okay. Because I believe for the state, they must be a registered voter in the state, correct? Okay. That's the only thing that jumped out at me.
Okay, anyone else have anything?
Well, I've received a number of calls and requests about this, wanting mayor and council to move forward with something like this, and one of the comments I received was from a citizen who was incredibly happy that we were formalizing a process that would protect their rights to do something like this, and they were very complimentary of our decision to go ahead and do this.
Good. Anyone else? Very well, does anyone have any comments from the audience that they'd like to make? No one has any comments. Robin, if you -- again, we'll hold us to the three-minute timeframe.
Robin Fraser, 142 Bentley Street. I hear that you said that there were requests to put something in writing, and I think that's a great idea. I was just wondering why you called a special meeting to do so, and why it wasn't just a regular agenda item.
Basically, it was the urgency, the number of calls we received at City Hall requesting this process be implemented as soon as possible.
Okay, so the urgency was in the number of calls you received to do it as soon as possible?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else have any comments?
I've been on the council only two years, and I've been stunned over the last two years how many pieces of legislation have come through the council that have stripped people of their civil rights in Tawny Town, and I found about 15 to 20 items in this that give me great concern. I think it's really important that the people know that this was a hasty graffiti, that a petition drive was just done in November, and the state law provided most of the data for how that was done. That was done in orderly fashion, the clerk received those, and there was some discussion about it. So now we have a seven-page document with detailed rules, includes a sample of how the petition has to be drafted. There's an attachment to the law, looks like this, this is how it has to be drafted. A number of specific details that were not specified perhaps as carefully in the state law, even though the state board of elections did review the petition that circulated in October of last year. So I just think it's important that people know that the first sentence of this article, whereas, says, "Whereas the provisions of the state law governing the format and details of citizen petitions do not apply to municipalities." Well, just last meeting, all the new councilmen stood up, taken oath of office, they'd support the Constitution, the laws of the state of Maryland, and the laws of the United States' government and its Constitution. And then here it says in the very beginning of this petition we're about to pass, that none of those laws really apply. Then later on in the seven pages of documents, it says, "If there's any doubt, go to the state law." So either the state law does apply or doesn't apply. I think some of the restrictions on petitioning governments are unconstitutional that are found in this, and I can't support it. So my, I guess, last question about why this was put on a rush agenda would be, what are the differences, maybe the attorney can speak to this, between what you've written here and what we did in the state law just a few months ago?
Certainly. The first thing to know is that the state law on this does not apply to the city of Tawny Town. The state law on citizen petitions is contained in the election article of the state law, and the election article doesn't apply to any aspects of the election in any municipality. So at the last time, we used that as a guide, and apparently the petitioners used that as a guide, to how they set up their petition, but there was confusion because there was nothing required, there was nothing stated that this is how it had to be. Whether the state board of elections reviewed that petition, they didn't do it officially on behalf of the city, that was something, you know, I can't speak to.
Well, I can speak to it because I was aware that they went to the state.
But that really carries no weight, because the state board of elections isn't involved in our election process or in our city. So as of right now, the city has no regulations on how petitions are supposed to be done. Now, your question about when state law applies and doesn't apply.
Now, how does this differ from the state law? That's my question.
There's several differentiations about state law, but state law doesn't apply. That's the first thing you have to understand. There are things in section subtitle 2, which is Title VI Election Law of Petitions, that talk about how state law goes about verifying situations, who you turn the information into, because that's all done through the state board of elections. We do ours, obviously, not the state board of elections. A lot of the things of validation and counting are similar, that they have to provide the same type of information that we're asking for. It talks about different filings, it talks about the circulators, there's an age requirement for circulators in the state law. It talks about what petitions can be done under state law, and that leads us to when you said sometimes state law applies and sometimes it doesn't. So to make it clear, state law on petitions does not apply in the town. However, certain state laws apply statewide, and three of those, or two of those that are applicable, are annexation laws and charter amendment laws. Both of those laws have options in them where citizens can take petitions, and we have no guidelines on that. So we are enacting a guideline that will now cover citizen petitions, and in our town, that would be three areas, four technically. One is annexations, the second is charter amendments, whether a citizen challenges what a council does, or whether a citizen wants to bring forward their own charter amendment, those are the three, and the fourth is the area of recall. So those are the four areas of state law that this basically addresses.
I have a follow-up, if that's okay.
Thank you for explaining that.
One of the things that we took from the state law during that petition drive was the requirement that one-fifth of the registered voters of the town be required to bring a charter amendment to referendum. But I was surprised, if you're going to do, take a bold stand that none of the state laws apply in Tawny Town, that this is silent about the number of, percentage of signatures required.
Right, and I didn't take a stand that none of the state laws apply. I mean, it's very specific, so you have to follow along. However, every area of law has its own requirements. This is just to the format of petitions. So annexation law, you have to have a certain percentage of the people in the affected area. Charter law, you have to have 20% of the registered voters. The charter of our town says, in recall areas, you have to have 20% of the registered voters. So the thresholds for when this applies are contained in other areas of law, be it state or charter, as the case may be.
That was succinct, thank you very much.
So on two notes, you really have a couple options here. I mean, state law doesn't apply unless we say that state law governs our petitions, or we adopt our own, is that correct?
In general, yes. If you made state law apply, you'd have workability problems, because state law talks about the interaction with the state board of elections.
Right, so I'm not saying that's the best solution, but that is one. There's nowhere in here that would contradict the state law, because that would be illegal, correct?
Right, state law doesn't apply, so you can do what you need to have done. We use state law as a guideline in creating this, so that the same acquired information is presented.
Right, okay.
All righty, anyone else? Very nothing I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry, Jackie's coming up, I'm sorry.
Jackie Jones, Carroll Vista. I think this is under also the ethics, and in our charter, and also in our commission or committee on ethics, we have very specifically says about behavior in meetings. And one of the things that I've noticed, that we have had some disorderly meetings, and God knows, we haven't done too much in this city, not yet, we haven't, but I think we could, if we had a little bit more order and so forth. Also, the Roberts Rules, they may have some changes, mine's the 10th edition, but it also has in it, the back of it, disciplinary for people of various clubs and organizations. So I think if we were to read up on that, you would understand it a little bit more. This has to be needed, this is what has been written, to be able for the petitions and so forth. And this is strictly my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, that's for sure, but in being with various organizations, there is a Roberts Rule of Order, and also the code of conduct is very important, and there have been some of the members that have not followed code of conduct.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Who wants to ask a question?
Well, there's a lady behind you that hasn't spoken, let her speak.
I have the questions, too. I am appearing on behalf of Catherine Adelaide, who cannot be here.
I'm sorry, what is your name, ma'am?
It doesn't matter, because I am appearing for Catherine Adelaide of Nine Courtland.
Unfortunately, you're incorrect, you must identify yourself and your address.
Where does it say that?
The presiding chair governs the meeting.
Okay, it's Jane, there you go. All right, so.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I need to know your name and address.
Yes, Jane, appearing for Catherine Adelaide of Nine Courtland Street. You can, I am her agent, and I have some questions. I'm sorry, I'm not sure they can hear me.
Please be seated, you're out of order.
Okay, so I have a question that Catherine Adelaide would like to pose.
I won't entertain the question unless you identify yourself.
It's a question, sir.
Please sit down.
Well, it goes to Mr. Gallow. It goes to Mr. Gallow.
You cannot answer the question.
Excuse me, why am I having to sit down? I'm speaking for Catherine Adelaide.
No, you need to identify yourself.
I am an agent, are you going to arrest me or something?
I find that you're speaking with Catherine Adelaide, but I need to know who you are and where you're from.
Jane, I told you Jane, I'm speaking for Catherine Adelaide. It doesn't matter.
Jane Doe, or what is it? What's your last name?
It does not matter, I promise you it doesn't matter, I'm her agent, she will tell you I'm her agent.
Ma'am, please, please sit down or identify yourself.
Mr. Gallow.
You have two choices here.
Mr. Gallow, you should be aware, Mr. Gallow, you should be aware that most of the provisions here, in this provision that you have written, most of these provisions will chill petition rights of people, and you have lied to this council about where the state board of elections will come to impress this. What's your authority? What's your authority? Tell me the authority. The authority of the police, what legal authority do you have, sir? What legal authority do you have? I am trying to actually just make a statement for Catherine Adelaide. Can you tell me what the authority is?
Let's carry on.
I just wanted to know.
Let's carry on.
Let's carry on. Robin, if you'd like to make some comments, you may. Robin, do you still want to make some comments?
If you don't want to make any comments, I'm going to call for a motion.
Sit down, please. Yeah, it's called disorderly conduct.
No, it's not disorderly conduct, not disorderly not conduct.
Based on your conversation about limiting who can be a petitioner, I just, first I want to clarify, did you say you had to be a registered voter of the town?
Is that in addition to?
That was an amendment that would be offered.
We should vote on amendments.
Well, we haven't voted on anything yet. Under circulators, I requested that they be a registered voter in the city, as an amendment, yes.
And what is your reasoning for that?
There's the vested interest in the city, just like we have with poll watchers, they must be a registered voter in the city. I think we use this, how many different places in our code?
Well.
We don't, here's what we don't need, and this is what we've had, are people coming from Elickett City, Silver Springs, et cetera, coming in here and trying to basically control the city? We need people in the city to be making these decisions.
Well, I thought the citizens were pretty smart, and if they read a paragraph, they could understand it and tell whether they wanted to sign a petition or not, and who presented the petition, doesn't really matter.
Absolutely, I think it absolutely does.
It just helps the people to get to more citizens, so the citizens can look at the issue and decide.
Seeing as how.
So I mean, I wouldn't, you know, if my sister came, was here from Georgia, and she wanted to help me on a petition drive, I don't know why that would be an issue.
As long as she accompanied you, there's no issue.
It's just another body to allow the citizens to read a paragraph and decide for themselves. So I just.
Robin, this is premature, this hasn't been introduced yet, and hasn't been amended yet. Right, the way that it reads right now, it's not in there, it's up to the council to decide whether that's going to be happen or not happen.
Right, well, I just wanted to have a little discussion before they made that decision without thinking about it.
Right, and I'd like to discuss with, I'd like to discuss that with you. My purpose on the council is protecting the rights of the citizens of Tawny Town.
Correct.
Not citizens of Elickett City or Silver Spring, it's the people of Tawny Town, and it's the people of Tawny Town who should be the ones putting together this petition and bringing it forward, because it impacts them directly.
Yeah, I differ with.
That's fine.
How's our time?
The petition for referendum comes from something that the city is doing, like it was a charter amendment, and there were citizens who were concerned, who put the petition together, but who walks door to door to present the idea to citizens who ought to know about the idea, who probably don't, really doesn't matter. The idea is to get as many citizens as possible aware of what's going on. So who's actually carrying the petition is pretty irrelevant.
And that's where we're going to disagree, because the people carrying the petition have a larger impact, and we need people within the city to be the ones supporting this petition, not the ones from outside.
Okay, well, you don't have as much confidence in the citizens to be smart enough to look at an issue and understand what it means.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave this issue, I'd just like to say that I'm 58 years old, and I've been active in politics since Ronald Reagan was the president. I worked the polls in the Hampstead municipal election in the past. I had a friend that was running from Ralph Street to be on the city council in 1980s, late 1980s, and we walked door to door for that person, and they weren't successful in being elected. And I represent a Republican club that represents Manchester and Myers and North Carroll, and if something happened in Manchester, and I felt like going and helping somebody, it was my friend in Manchester, I would be upset if Manchester said I wasn't allowed to be involved in the election there, because that's my freedom as America.
That's between you and Manchester.
Cannot address those rules.
That's my freedom as America, I can be active if I want to. I differ with Mr. Vance, that we have to control everybody, every movement.
Counselor Vigliotti has the floor.
Councilman, consider it this way, right? It's one thing for you to live in a different county or a different town, and to simply spread awareness or information, it's something else completely to take a civil matter into your own hands to attempt to affect a change with how another municipality, another county, another state, another country governs themselves. I would never.
That's why I would never vote for Joe Vigliotti again in my life.
Well, thank you, councilman, for that, but I would never.
Because I would never want to restrict somebody's right to be involved in politics.
One at a time, please. Councilor Vigliotti has.
Councilman, I take that as a privilege, that you would not vote for me.
But I would.
All right, I'll take them up.
Now, councilman, I would never go to a place like France or Australia and tell them how to run their own country. It just would not happen.
I just believe we're losing a civil right if we pass this piece, many of the civil rights, if we pass this piece of legislation that restricts.
Since you failed to point out a single civil right that's actually being affected.
Again, councilor, what you believe or don't believe, really doesn't make any difference.
Well, it makes a difference how I vote.
The majority rules this council.
This piece of hasty graffiti, they rush together and get something, because they have a goal.
Let's move on, please.
Trample all over your civil rights.
Let's move on, we've heard all this before, we have some comments.
I was looking it up on my.
Can I get your name and address, please?
Craig Schultz, and I'm from Baltimore County, but I was circulating the last two petitions. I can't find anything in the state law that says, in fact, the state law says you don't have to be a resident or even registered voter of the state of Maryland anywhere within the state, and also, circulators can be paid. So the state of Maryland, in what I would say is a bigger wisdom than a small municipality, doesn't have those restrictions. And circulating a petition doesn't affect an outcome, it's just for information, and I mean, people can either sign or not sign a petition, or even make comments. It's not affecting an election or a referendum to just circulate petitions and get signatures. I mean, they still have to be properly verified, so I'm not sure why the municipality is trying to do, you know, a one-up on the state.
What is your name again?
Past experience, basically.
Craig, Craig?
It just seems like an unnecessary thing, if the state doesn't do it, why the town would do it?
Thank you.
And why the town would be jealous of protecting its little fiefdom against quote-unquote outsiders just trying to inform people, because that's pretty much what, you know, an electioneering or a referendum is doing.
May I ask a question? Why a person from Baltimore County would have a concern about what the city of Tawny Town did?
Well, because what happens in a municipality like Tawny Town can spread to other jurisdictions. Now, I'm not in an incorporated town, I'm out in the Boondocks.
There are no incorporated towns in Baltimore County.
Well, I mean, even, yeah, I know Baltimore County's a little different there, but it can spread. If the municipality, if the municipality does this, you know, if a county can do it, and, you know, Baltimore County could do it, when the state doesn't have those requirements. I mean, if the state doesn't feel the need to do it, I don't know why a smaller jurisdiction would have that need.
One thing that we've always been told in municipal, first of all, chartered municipal government is home rule, we were able to establish our own laws that affect our own citizens, and in a very direct way, so that's an extreme blessing that we have, that some counties don't even have. Our own Carroll County doesn't have that authority. The other side of it is that regardless of what the state law is, we have to abide by it. We can always strengthen the state law, in other words, make it more stringent, but we can't weaken the state law.
But I just don't see this.
So that's the way the paradox works. You can't degrade a state law, you can't make it less than what it is, but you can make it stronger than what it is. So we're considering doing that tonight, so thank you very much.
It seems like an unnecessary thing, when the state doesn't feel.
I appreciate that. Mr. Graham?
Troy Graham, 16 West Baltimore, 9 Girk Street. Two and a half years I've sat in these, I've never stood up and talked before, and I talk in front of a lot of people, and I'm actually shaking for the first time, okay?
That's why you have podiums, huh?
Yes, for balance. Two and a half years I've seen this circus go on. Today, with this special meeting, I think the faction that has created chaos has shown its true face. This is all about outside forces coming into a town that, I own a home, I'm married to a homeowner, I pay taxes here, I live here, and I think we have seen truly what the ultimate goal of this faction is, is to bring people from Baltimore County, Howard County, Washington, wherever, in an attempt to dictate to us, and to make it chaotic enough that we give up. I think the track record of this faction shows that they go into an organization, create chaos and havoc, people get disgusted, they leave, and then they are able to acquire the power. I'm pleading and begging with the council that you act in the best interest of those of us who pay our taxes and buy our things here, and have our friends and our families here, that you protect the city of Tawny Town from these outside forces, because I'm not 100% certain what their ultimate intention is, but I know anyone who has done this in the past, the intentions were never good. So hopefully I stayed under three minutes.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll entertain one more comment, if anyone wants to make it. Yes, ma'am?
I still don't understand what somebody.
Please state your name.
Rhonda Kritzings, 168 Grand, Tawny Town. I still don't understand why this is becoming an issue here. I don't understand how family members or friends can't come into any area and help anybody, get, spread information. As I was campaigning, I learned of the Association of Cancer Society that came into Tawny Town, and now there's a big effort for Tawny Town to be a representative for them, and then Tawny Town council goes to Westminster and dresses up and does events for them. It's no different than forming any kind of commission with other people and making it stronger. When it's somebody that's a neighbor or somebody in another town, it's not to come into your town and hurt you, it has no bearing on what we do and how we do it, it's just giving people information and helping other people go out and spread the word of different things. It has no bearing on harming anyone. I don't understand where this harm comes from.
Well, Ms. Kritzings, may, I'm sorry.
And nobody's saying that other people from other places can't come in and spread information, they're simply saying.
That's exactly what this is.
They can't carry around a petition and get signatures, that's what they can't do.
It's the same thing, what's the difference?
If you can't find the support in the town to walk around and get signatures for petition, maybe that petition's not relevant or necessary.
And extra people from families and friends?
But why?
What's the harm?
Why?
The point is.
What's the harm?
Again, the reason behind.
I saw many people on all of y'all's different.
And we saw people on that last petition who were misinformed.
It came out of town.
Because they weren't given the right facts from people that are out of town.
This is what's common here, is that things are getting perverted and skewed. This is what's common here, is that things are getting perverted and skewed. The point is this, circulators, not campaigners, if someone wants to come in and go door-to-door and say, "Don't sign the petition that's going to come around," or say, "Make sure you sign this petition that comes around," that's fine, but they can't sit there with petitions and say, "Please sign this, so that we can change your town." That's the point. We're not saying they can't come in and campaign, that's not what this is at all. It's that you have to be a registered voter of the city of Tawny Town to go around door-to-door and get these signatures. That's simple. You can't continue to pervert these ideas to make it sound like we're taking something away.
So you're assuming that they're taking information and giving wrong information, when they're giving the actual piece of paper that is-
Would be if there was an ulterior motive.
-what is being circulated, we're going to be voting on it.
Maybe another agenda. This will protect us from that.
Ms. Kritzings, may I ask you a question?
The voting-
All right, Council, I'm sorry.
Ms. Kritzings?
I don't know that I'm not going to take any more comments, I'm going to ask if I can receive a motion to introduce ordinance 08-2017.
Wait.
Is there a second?
Isn't it, are you introducing this, or are you adopting?
Adopting. You're adopting, not introducing.
Can we introduce and adopt at the same time?
I don't think you can. Why can we do that, but we can't do that with a regular ordinance? What makes that different than the-
Well, there's a few ways we can do it. We can vote to suspend the rules.
Well, let me just read that from the charter, if I could just do that, Mr. Mayor, as a point of order. It says, "In cases of emergency, the above requirement may be suspended by affirmative vote of four members of the council."
There you go.
So it says, "Adoption of ordinances, no ordinance shall be passed in a meeting at which it is introduced." That's, we brought this up over and over and over again, and at any regular or special meeting of the council, held not less than six or more-
Like we were there, Don.
-than 70 days prior to the meeting. So I've been mentioning that over and over and over. But if you all vote, four of you vote, this is an emergency, I'd just like to know why it's an emergency, to take people's civil rights away.
Explain that to you already, Don. All right.
Why is it an emergency to do this?
What's the procedure here, Counselor?
The councilman read the section, he read them out of order, if you read the-
No, I led, because it was about suspending the rules.
Right, but if you read the first section-
You said that we should suspend it and adopt.
Okay, if you read the first section of that code, it talks about the rules for passing ordinances. If you read the second section, which you read first, it talks about how you suspend the rules in the case of an emergency. If you all read your ordinance that's in front of you, on the very last page, in the capital letters, it says pursuant to Section C209B of the Charter of the City of Tawny Town, the mayor and the city council hereby declare the passage of this ordinance as an emergency by a vote of blank in favor and blank opposed. So, if you want to do this tonight, you make a motion to adopt, you discuss your motion, and then you make a motion to declare it an emergency, you need a four-fifths vote to do that, and then you take your vote on the pending ordinance.
Isn't that out of order, shouldn't you have declared emergency first, before you adopt?
If you'd like to do it that way, that's easily as well.
I think that that's the only way they can adopt, the same day that they introduce.
Except there's nothing on the floor to adopt, that's the only issue with that.
Well, the being an emergency is included in what we adopt.
Right.
So we would be redundant.
So you're going to take two votes?
No.
When you take the two votes, usually you're going to have a motion and a second on the floor, and then the first vote, you're going to declare an emergency?
Idiots.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Excuse me? They're laughing.
When nobody should be talking, because I have the floor.
So, the first vote you take is the vote for an emergency, you need four fifths, or else you can't adopt it, so therefore you wouldn't take the second vote, it would just be an introduction at that point.
Okay.
I move-
All right.
It's not an emergency to adopt seven pages of new laws restricting my freedoms.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Fraser's trying to make a motion.
I did make a motion, that it's not an emergency, this special meeting is like a sideshow, and it's not an emergency to adopt seven, when the laws are pretty well-defined in the state law, we had a little trouble back in November.
It don't apply, right.
We don't have any serious emergency, so I make a motion, it's not an emergency.
Is there a second? There are no seconds, the motion dies. Is there any other motions?
I move that we declare the emergency.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Oh my, it's an emergency.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose, it's not an emergency, that's ridiculous. It's a dog and pony show.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we pass ordinance 08-2017 as amended.
Second.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.